Let's call our meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Mayan Bay Council of the Borough of Seaside Park County, Ocean, State of New Jersey, held on Thursday, August 10, 2023, advertised to begin at the conclusion of the work session, which has just now ended. Pursued to the provisions of New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by transmitting the notice of meaning for publication to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger on January 4, 2023. Notice of the meeting of the governing body has been posted in the corridor of the municipal building and in the office of the municipal clerk. Roll call.
Councilmember Ammaville.
Here.
Councilmember Condos.
Here.
Councilmember Kraft.
Here.
Thank you, Councilmember Dr. McKeown. Absent. Councilmember Will.
Yes.
Council President DeMichael.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Thank you.
Let us all now rise for a moment of silence to be filed by our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. The minutes available are those for July 27, 2023, a work session and July 27, 2023, a regular meeting. Are there any questions, comments from council, or if not, a motion?
I'll make the motion. We approve the meetings, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Ammaville.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Wolk. Roll call.
Councilmember Ammaville.
Yes.
Councilmember Will.
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Council President DeMichael.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next on the agenda are ordinances. The first is final reading, hearing, and adoption of ordinance 2023-07 dealing with privately owned salt storage. This particular ordinance comes about as per the requirements through the state, in particular as to the mandatory store motor requirements for all municipalities, and this will bring us into compliance on that particular aspect of the package of ordinances that have been submitted. Any other comments from council? This is a second reading, and as such, I will go into the audience for the hearing. If there are any public questions or comments, second reading as to the 2023-07. Hearing none, I would close the public portion. I'd entertain a motion from council for second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Wolk and second by Councilmember Kraft. Roll call.
Councilmember Will.
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Ammaville.
Yes.
Council President DeMichael.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. And next is final reading and adoption ordinance 2023-08, amending the Bay Code of the Borough of Seaside Park so as to amend Chapter 65 entitled Police Department. And the specific issue entails making available potential individuals eligible who have gone through the Academy and the alternate route program and for potential candidates for job openings in the municipality. Anyone else on council as to second reading? If not, we'll go into the audience for second reading and adoption ordinance 2023-08. If there are any public comments. Hearing none, I would close the public portion. I'd entertain a motion from the council.
I'll move, Mayor.
Motion by Council President DeMichael.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Condos. Roll call.
Council President DeMichael.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Will.
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Ammaville.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And the next is a first reading of an ordinance introduction, ordinance 2023-09, amending Chapter 350 of the Code of the Borough of Seaside Park entitled Property Maintenance. And that came about through the committee. I don't know, any questions, comments at this time? First one.
Bring it into compliance to the latest code.
Yeah, what happens, Mayor, is we, I think, actually ordinance cites the 2012 even, I think, property maintenance code, and they've had a number of revisions since then. So the committee, it suggested that we amend the ordinance to, A, reflect the current edition of the IPMC, which is 2021, and we add language that says this ordinance also will include any subsequent supplements, amendments, or new additions. So we won't have to go back and keep amending our ordinance to keep up with the maintenance code, which is amended every two or three years. So this covers that, and once and for all, we should not have to keep amending this ordinance.
Very good. And do I have a motion from council on first reading?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Wolk, second by Council President DeMichael. Roll call.
Councilmember Will.
Yes.
Council President DeMichael.
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Ammaville.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And the next, before going to authorizations, which is on the printed agenda, I would welcome a motion from council so as to comply with Robert's rules, and the motion would be to allow the reading into the record of a proclamation, and we have that proclamation referenced on the work session. It has been sent around through the Ocean County Historical Society to all the municipalities as to recognition of the week of September 17, and that is a special anniversary for the Constitution. Do we have a motion? Motion by Councilmember Condos.
I'll second.
Second by Council President DeMichael. Roll call.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Council President DeMichael.
Yes.
Councilmember Will.
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Ammaville.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And as such, it would be my honor to read into the record the proclamation, and this has been given to us through the Ocean County Historical Society, and it reads as follows: "As well as the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of all liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule by law, and whereas September 17, 2023, marks the 236th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through the 23 as Constitution Week, and whereas we recognize Captain Joshua Huddy, chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, along with the Ocean County Historical Society, in celebrating Constitution Week here in Ocean County, now either for Johnny Peterson Jr., by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the Borough of Seaside Park and the county of Ocean, to hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through the 23 as Constitution Week, and we ask all our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution, which they had in 1787, by vigilantly, vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties. And that proclamation can therefore be adopted and hung in the Borough Hall, and our town can join with others here in Ocean County, which has a very proud tradition, going back to the revolutionary days, which I suspect some of us aren't even aware of the nature of that, but we're going to be, and I believe, the celebrations upcoming for the 250th anniversary of the Revolution. And I know the, we've gotten correspondence already from the federal government, the state government, and I know there's a lot planned for that particular year, and certainly our town would want to join in that celebration, which is upcoming. And there are also some mini grants, Ammaville, so we can look to apply for them, but... So I, as this is a proclamation, we don't technically need a motion, but we certainly could have one, if so desired, for proclaiming of the governing body, if so desired, if you'd like. And will we...
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. We'll proclaim it. And as such, I will move on. The next item on the agenda is authorizations. I'll read them in summary fashion. The first, Ringmount Productions Jeep Show, October 7, 2023, with a rain date, October 8, 2023, 9 to 5, and lots 2 and 3. B, Fogwood Avenue Block Party, September 16, 2023, 1:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. C, Worship Service and Baptism, Union Church, August 26, 2023, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., Fifth Avenue, Ocean Beach. D is Pazana Wedding, September 29, 2023, 5 to 5:30, Stockton Avenue Beach. E, American Angler Surf Fishing Tournament, October 1, 2023, 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Ocean Beaches, and that was subject matter to discussion at the last regular meeting as a one particular date sought did not comply with our beach management plan and that which had been approved through the DEP. So apparently they recognized that and have the one day only. And any questions, comments from any council members as to any authorizations?
I have a comment on the American Angler Surf Fishing Tournament.
Yes.
The date listed in the agenda is October 1, but in the application, they also list a rain date of October 14 to 15. So I don't know if we just need to, I guess, change the agenda to accept that. That's one thing. The second thing was that in your application, in the use of thorough facilities, for the sheet that says, "Indicate, describe your intended route," it has the words, "With four-by-four access waived or daily permits," and that's not the case. Our administrator indicated that they will be paying, but the, what's in the package says that, you know, fees will be waived, which is not the case.
No, in past years, they've bought, numbered both permits, actually hadn't even used them.
Yeah, so just their description at the top, I guess, they wrote it out, which, you know, it should be strict in that.
So that would be an amendment technically, and if the, if this were approved, there are two different amendments you're suggesting, and the insurance also references the rain date, or should.
Yeah, the insurance does.
So you're, you're...
Yeah, the insurance, that's fine.
Yep.
Just the two minutes.
So there are two amendments to that particular one. Any other questions or comments?
From Ringmount Productions, Mayor, the first one?
Yes.
They have a certificate that is October 7, 2023, 12:01 a.m. to 10:08, 2:01 a.m., and they put on here that their rain date is 10:08. So if they go to their rain date, the certificate wouldn't cover the rain date.
So we would need an amended certificate.
I would prefer them to have it, say, October 7, 2023, to 12:01 a.m. to October 9, 2023, 12:01 a.m., to cover the rain date, because if it rains, we're not going to get a certificate the next, you know, they're going to cancel it that morning or something, or the day before, and you'll never see a certificate for October 8. I'm concerned about that.
It looks like a similar issue would necessitate amendment on the Back to the Fishing Tournament one. That, it references date 9:30 to 10:01. We've eliminated 9:30, but that too doesn't show the rain date on the certificate. So that's a third amendment to the fishing one.
They're covered for... I believe it was for the year, Mayor.
Oh, it is?
It's 9:15 to 9:15, 23 to 24.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, we're good there. At least that's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
I was looking in the description.
No, no problem. And then there's one more, Mayor.
So what, in terms of the Ringmount, the amendment then should be for an amended certificate of insurance.
To reflect through 10:09, 23, you know, 12:01 a.m.
Okay. And one more?
One more. On the, on the, yeah. I gotta flip through everything again. Hold on, there's one more there. I noticed it's no good. I can't, hold on. Okay, so for the Pazana Wedding?
Yes.
Their liability certificate says policy effective date 9/29/23, policy expiration date 9/29/23. So that doesn't quite work for me either.
Mm-mm. It's just for the one day.
Yeah, so the 9/20, the expiration date then should be 9/30/23, because they don't have a rain date.
So that is a proposed amendment to the Pazana Wedding. Anything else from council? Any comments, amendments, or about any of the authorizations? If not, I would entertain a motion with the amendments as referenced, and those include, number one, Ringmount, for a presentment of an amended certificate of insurance to cover up to October 9, 12:01 p.m. a.m., rather, and the amendment also to the wedding, Pazana Wedding, to show a certificate of insurance to September 30, 2023, and two amendments reference to the American Angler Surf Fishing Tournament. Those are, as per Councilmember Kraft, the October 13, 15 rain date, and that there's no waiver being granted by the municipality that the permits should be required for beach bargains. Is that...
Yes, of course. We check off the beach budget, which may be inconsistent, and they pay in the past. And they, yeah.
Do we have a motion with those amendments incorporated therein?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Council President DeMichael.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kraft. Roll call.
Council President DeMichael.
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Will.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Ammaville.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And next on the agenda is the payment of claims, 223, 219. Those claims are billiard from July 28, 2023, to August 10, 2023. Any questions, comments from council, or if not, any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Council President DeMichael.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Wolk. Roll call.
Council President DeMichael.
Yes.
Councilmember Will.
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Ammaville.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Number nine on the agenda, resolutions. I'll read in summary fashion. 220, authorizing the designated miscellaneous refunds for marina fees. 221, authorizing Remington Vernic Engineers to provide professional services to proceed with the preparation of the 2023 Community Rating System, CRS, recertification. 222, confirming the appointment of code enforcement officer designated salary. 223, decrease a change fund at the payment window. 224, authorizing CMA associates to provide professional engineering services, marine survey and inspection at the marina. And that, as per the work session, any other questions, comments from any council member on any of the resolutions?
I just had a positive comment on the refund for marina. I personally appreciated Mr. Cleveland's complete, like, letters for each one, so it made it very easy to understand why each refund was being granted, so we didn't have to ask those questions. I thank him for that. It was very helpful.
It was. Productive.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions, comments from council on any resolutions? It's not required by law, but it's our practice here to go into the audience if there's any comments on any resolutions to allow, saying if there are any public comments, if anyone has them, could please give your name and address to the record. Any comments on resolutions? Hearing none, I'd close the public portion. I would entertain a motion as a consent agenda from council, unless anyone else objects.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Motion by Council President DeMichael.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Condos. Roll call.
Council President DeMichael.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Will.
Yes.
Councilmember Ammaville.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. And that concludes the written items on the agenda this evening. Does anyone else on council or administrator, anyone have any other questions, comments?
I have one comment.
Yes.
I just wanted to bring everyone up to speed as where we're sitting with the beach badge remnant. Presently, we are sitting at 1.56 million. I won't give you the rest of the digits, but it's close enough. That does not include the holiday season, because the money that's collected for the holiday season badges, which is from 12:01 to 12:31, really is on the 2022, in a revenue. So this amount does not include that, as I stated, so. So that's an accurate number, and that's as of August 6. And this number is $42,703 more than last year.
Is this on target, or are you expecting anything?
I don't think it is, yeah.
Thank you. Any other council questions, comments? Obviously, by way of announcement, I think the council is excited along with the Historical Society and the 125th Anniversary Committee to announce, as it has been announced, the parade this coming Saturday, as well as the town fair thereafter. The parade's to begin along the bayfront with the staging area at Fifth Avenue, going along the bayfront to the marina, and right thereafter, it's listed around 12 noon, would be the start of the town fair, as well, and it's scheduled 12 to 7, I'm advised, with a number of bands. I think many of them have rave reviews already, having participated in some of the Monday night bands, and we have the one also, who performed for us previously, as well, the brass band. So a lot of exciting things, everyone's looking forward to, to that. So welcome to everybody, and hopefully everyone can work that in. It should be fun, and we hope the weather man or woman cooperates.
And the start time for the parade is 11 a.m. It's a change.
11. It is a change from what had been talked about back in time, and also the route is somewhat shorter. At one point, there was talk of starting at around 13th Avenue, but because of the boat ramp situation, and the people that are right in that area regularly on a given Saturday, this will be safer, easier, and equal fun, hopefully. So. Anyone else on council, any questions, comments? If not, we'll go into the audience if there's any public comments, if you have, same, if you could give your name and address into the record.
Good evening, Dr. Philman 308, Kater Avenue. I'm really delighted to hear that our beach revenue is up by 46,000. It's terrific. Is there any way we could defray those funds and continue to do work on Bayview Avenue for those people that have to walk blocks whenever there's any storm? There's been some work done that's mitigated some of the angst for the folks living on Bayview. Is there any way that we could start defray, you know, start taking that kind of profit and revenue and put it to good use so that our bayside owners will have some relief? Thank you.
Well, certainly, when I correct the record, there's no such thing as profit when it comes to beach revenues. It's the dramatic loss if you factor in all the cost expenses that take for operating the municipality, including but not limited to the public works, police, and other departments, and the extra personnel, but certainly everyone joins in any sentiments to make life easier for all our residents, including but not limited to those along the bayfront. Any other questions or comments?
Nelson Rosen, Main 122M Street. Mr. Mayor, I was just wondering what the latest status is on the ballpark lighting project.
Well, by way of a good segue, we're very excited, and we thank everyone sitting up here, all the council members, our administrator, our public works department. We were very excited to open a brand-new playground, which is up and running this week, and included in that playground were the placement of the conduits in anticipation of all new lighting to be installed. So that was all completed this week with a opening, and you went down there, there were a lot of kids there today, as a matter of fact. So the lighting, LED lighting, is scheduled to take place in September after the season, for the fact that that will entail shutdown of the ball field, and obviously, this is still in the season for families, for everybody using the field, plus the league that plays there as well, so.
Very nice. Glad to hear that.
So we're looking forward to that next phase.
A second question. I was just wondering if anything, any discussion was made regarding the parking signs on the boardwalk, regarding parking restrictions and ordinances or codes? Were they enhanced at all? Because I've been saying that I think they're a little bit small, hard for people to see them.
I don't, which signs are there?
The small signs near the, well, they're not near the kiosk, but public parking along the boardwalk by the beach, they list the parking, are they called ordinances? Restrictions? And they're not that big, and it's difficult for the public to see them. And what's happening is, some people, and I've mentioned this before, and I'm concerned, that they're backing in, and that's one of the problems, is that the sign says head-on parking, but it's just very small. It's hard for the public to see that. And I'm surprised nobody's taken this up as an issue, because it's not, I don't feel it's right that these people are getting taken. I don't think they're doing it on purpose. It's a small sign, and they're not right near the kiosk. They can be. That's what I don't understand, why something like this can't be improved, signage. Does anybody understand what I'm saying?
This is public comment, so everyone heard the comment.
I just want to make sure, that's all.
Yeah, I want to make sure.
All right. Any comments?
I heard, I, I think we can look to see where they are, if there's a better placement. I mean, back into those, you have to really almost be going the wrong way, in the one way of the parking, so. They'd have to intentionally try it back in rather than head-on park, so.
And also, not everyone has to pay at a kiosk. They can pay for parking on the app and never even go to a kiosk, so putting a sign at a kiosk wouldn't really help those people.
Would really help, it would help some people that pay at the kiosk.
Yeah.
Right?
Thank you.
I think, thanks.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I would close the public portion. I'd entertain a motion from council, unless anyone on council has anything additional at this time. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Wolk.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kraft. Roll call.
Councilmember Will.
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Condos.
Yes.
Councilmember Ammaville.
Yes.
Council President DeMichael.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And thank everyone for coming out this evening. Maybe we... Maybe we'll beat the rain if they're, if they're right.